Jimmy Cooper.
Exactly, right. So why, why bother? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, November 4th, 6:30 meeting of the committee of the whole community development, our second meeting of the week. Thank you to our meeting force and to the committee members and the council for being here. The second item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. If I can have somebody. So moved by Councilor Cameron, seconded by Greg Maudler. All in favor? Yes. Three would be disclosure, community area interests or the general nature thereof. Does anyone have any disclosures today?
None.
Hearing none, moving to number four, there are no delegations and presentations. So we are on to number five, A live, which is five eight one, which is the application to amend site plan as we've seen earlier this year for Wendy's eats and treats. Wendy.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, as you mentioned, we did see the site plan control agreement earlier this year. We have an application now to amend it. This is for Wendy's eat and treats in the village of Cardinal. When we first adopted first entered into the site like control agreement with the with the property owner, they had intended to remove their pressure vehicle and the building tanks at the end of the season. So the agreement contains a clause requirement that it be removed from December 1st until, I think it was March 30, March, or March, I mean, March 1st, sorry. And they're proposing that they leave the vehicle of propane tanks on site year round. Also, we asked that they complete and submit a grading and drainage plan for the site before they were operational next year, and they have already submitted that grading and drainage plan. So we would add that into the cycling program as we're doing the amendment. And we also want to recognize an additional entrance way off of Canal Street. So the original agreement and the proposed agreement to amend it are included.
All right. Is there, what, can you read the recommendation for?
Uh, the committee recommend that council adopt the bylaw to amend the site plan control agreement to twenty twenty one dash twenty six.
Okay. Before I open into questions, I just want to ask a question. This could be my my own adherence, but looking at the site plan agreement, which would be page six of sixty six. All or associates or common associates. From the top right. As construction notes, are those common and are they on all site plans? Or are they specific to this site plan?
To the Chair, this is a grading and drainage plan. So the site plan that was provided via page five of sixty six, are these notes common?
Maybe mine's different than yours, but.
I think it's common to have notes with a grading and drainage plan.
Okay, because I just found it a little bit confusing, confusing, because it talks about buildings and it talks about footings. It talks about the top of the foundation elevations and things like that. And I'm kind of wondering how any of that actually applies to, to this, it's a parking lot. So it just, it just seemed weird to me and I wasn't sure.
Looking at the notes here, they look like standard notes.
Standard notes, they're on.
Yeah.
It didn't have one. So.
Yeah. The engineer that's hearing them, I think, is saying this is not an official survey. This is the the purposes that it's used for and things like that. But the site plan that the applicants provided are, is the plan on or sorry, five of sixty six.
Five, yeah, but yeah, looking at that plan and then, or that drainage and grading plan and then reading the comments or the notes on the side, they had nothing to do with drainage. So I was just a little, little surprised by that. So, um, okay, let's start a discussion. That's it with the way, Councilor Kim.
Yes, um, in the, in the original plan, there was, there was mention of presentation with neighboring of population, neighboring houses. Was that done for this amendment?
To the Chair, no, not that I'm aware of.
Connor, you have your hand up. Good question.
Well. No, I, I'm not going to say anything.
Maudler?
Through the Chair, has there, how is the, has there been any type of complaints regarding, like, for any of the neighboring people with this, well, with the chip truck that we should be concerned of?
To the Chair, I'm not aware of any complaints.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Lillah.
Oh, maybe help, Mr. Maudler, too, is I was told by half of the people who live in rent in those homes across from the fifth stand. And they love it because they do delivery to apartments at Burrows. Those people just love it, so.
Very nice to hear, yeah. Nothing, I don't really matter as much anyways, but is this the, with the intent of just parking there for the season or the winter season, or is it actually going to?
To the Chair, I think the intent is to park it there first.
Anyone else have any comments?
Oh, well. With it being left there for the, the season, you want an extra driveway in there. Are they planning on using this parking lot for parking in the winter or is it going to be a dormant parking lot?
To the Chair, I'm not aware of their intentions for that parking space. I would imagine that they're not going to be visiting the site on a regular basis. Could, I couldn't.
Your request was just for storage. Good. Mr. Mayor.
I just had a couple of things. They're small little things, but it helped me. So the bylaw that we're being asked to ask is, or the agreement that we're asked, being asked to support is the one on page three of sixty six. And the first thing is, is that the site plan forming exhibit one, general site plan of schedule B be replaced with the attached general site plan. Well, it took me a minute to determine which one I would call the general site plan, because first of all, the the writing on the second one, which is the grading plan is so small, it's very difficult to read. So eventually figured out that the one on page five of sixty six is the general site plan amended. And I would like to see a title added to that sheet so that it's clear, which is the general site plan. And this is that the general site plan amended and it, it's clearly labeled schedule B exhibit one. And then on the other one, which is six of sixty six, this is the grading and drainage plan. And I would like to see a title added to this page to clearly identify it as the grading and drainage plan new. And it is scheduled B exhibit two. So just those two small things and I'm happy to support the recommendation. Just like to see titles on most of the pages.
Um, I have a small question, my own, and it goes back to the original site plan control agreement, and it comes to number four, registration of agreement commencement of work. We're amending the site plan control agreement. Is the work not already done?
To the Chair. Yes, the, that entrance way is constructed. So they have they've submitted an application for an entrance way. And our Director of Operations has visited the site to review, to say that he is prepared to approve an entrance way there. It can't be approved until the site plan control agreement is amended though. Should not have been installed prior to that approval.
Well, was the we had that issue with, with the original parking area, too. Was there any consideration given to whether the, the workmanship or the quality of the workmanship met what our standards are? Because I think in the original agreement, it said that the work had to be completed to our standards.
That the grading and drainage plan was.
I think for giving the parking, giving the parking area as well.
Yeah, I think the issue there would be, is there, is there an entrance way culled? And I don't know, I can't remember the ditch configuration along the, along the two streets, but is there an entrance way culbert and was the entrance way culbert installed or, or was it required? And, and as far as the second entrance way goes, that entrance way was actually constructed without any approvals. And it sounds like it wasn't even approved prior to its construction by the Director of Operations. He's prepared to approve it now, provided we, we do this. Botheres me when people kind of jump the gun, but it's, it's a relatively minor transgression, I guess.
Yeah. Last question for me. The idea of, of pausing, I think that they've done a fantastic job this, this year. I think everything's been great, but the, but the reason that we paused the drainage and sort of held the, the application for the site plan agreement, at least in my memory, was to give them a year to find out what the effects would be for, for the area. So from myself, I guess, to, to this C A O or through to Wendy. Are, are we happy with, you know, the general traffic, the drainage of, of the area, the construction of, of the parking, the way that people utilize the parking and, and enter the street and, and enter the parking area? It's, it's not what I thought we had agreed to originally. And I'm not sure how many cars actually have to be allowed before it becomes a more formal parking lot with with other restrictions on it, but yeah, I'm just not sure that it conforms to what our original idea was, so.
Um, to the Chair, it doesn't conform to the original site plan that we approved. The original site plan had an entrance off of Walker Street and then opened up to a parking lot. So people could pull into the parking lot, pull out and drive out of the parking lot. It was not constructed that way. It's constructed, so it's still deep enough that people could pull in and pull out and drive out of the parking lot. But I don't think it's ideal that the entrance way where it meets the township property is so wide. It was meant to be shorter and you'll see that in the original site plan. Is it? I don't remember all the questions you asked. I think the intention for allowing some extra time for the grading and drainage plan was that it was really expensive, especially for a smaller business that was just starting up and wanted to give them some time to be able to do that. I want to be personally, that was a very successful season and we're able to provide that plan sooner rather than later. So provided it early. And as far as the parking lot goes, I think the parking lot is one of the reasons we are in a situation where we're asking for a site plan controlled agreement because it's a parking space with more than, I think with at least five spaces is what triggers the site plan control agreement. And I am certainly happy that through consultation with other staff members, we we asked for a parking lot with at least six spaces on the lot, because those exact requirements weren't in our zoning bylaw, but we recognized the need early from other refreshment vehicle sites that we have looked at, but we need to have a parking.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, you want to?
Yes, you referred to the fact that this was sort of a initially, it was a sort of, we didn't require the site plan because it was, we weren't too sure that we wanted them to go to that expense in their first year, which was kind of a pilot year for them, but it was also a pilot year for us in the sense that I think we have to really evaluate what role these kinds of operations contribute to the township. We have now at least two of them. And I don't think that the revenue that we generate from these types of operations in terms of taxes or rental space or licenses or whatever it is is anywhere near to the same as what we get from those people who have invested in businesses with with, with permanent locations. And by adopting these changes that we're asking for here tonight, and I said I was prepared to do it, but it's with reluctance, because these people really do, in some ways, provide a competitive environment for those people that have invested in businesses that are operating all year round. And basically, all they do is they cream the cream off the summer season. And, and I've heard rumblings to that effect from not just one, but two or three of the other business owners in the township in the village of Cardinal. So, you know, when we approve this tonight, you got to remember what we're really doing is we're allowing this business to become a more permanent type of complete standalone location and for very, very limited amount of revenue. So that's another side that I think is not up for discussion tonight. But if certainly when we approve this, if we approve this, it enhances this business and gives it a sense of permanency that it doesn't have if we insist that the trailer and tanks be removed each season. It gets us a, a greater sense of certainty, a greater sense of permanency to the detriment of those other folks.
Councilor Hunter, first, Greg, sir.
I just have a, this move a discussion here, what you think was taking place here. I didn't realize this driveway, all right, and put in. We're very strict on these culvert and driveways going in anyplace else in the township. My house should be a builder or a farmer wants an entrance into a field or, or something. The owners have no chance buttoning in. Our township ones by the culvert, they put it in and we have a set rate of X number of dollars of cost for so many feet of culvert, if you want more, so much mu- much more. I have a bit of a problem with allowing this that are operation managers willing to approve this culvert.
But you. Just for one sec, let's clarify, because I don't think there's actually a culvert there.
So i- i- if I may, there, there is no culvert either of those locations.
Just the entrance way. No, no, I mean, just the entrance way, it's not still a culvert.
Correct. But so still, still, wherever they put a culvert, that our road should tend to decide wherever it needs a culvert or not. But we still have a flat rate to put that entrance way in, wherever they put a culvert, they're not flat rate. But they pay, but we define width and everything's defined, the type of stone was in, in there and, and the way it's put in. I have a bit of a problem. Trying to let people put where you see this, you feel like approved. Somebody else has kind of put the car to the horse here, so.
If, if, if I may, to the Chair, the township didn't allow an entrance way to go in. It was completed before we became aware of it. Yeah, so, so it's, it's, it, it certainly is a concern, but typically what would happen is if you're looking to put an entrance way in, you would put your, your stakes in where you're anticipating where that entrance to, to go. You pay your, your, at least your hundred dollar fee or we'll call it an administrative fee for the for the roads department to go look at the entrance way, see if it's a, you know, safe and, and what may be required, whether a culvert's required or not required. If culvert's required, it's typically, I, I want to say that it's seven hundred dollars plus the one hundred dollar fee. The latest bylaw does have the ability for the owner to install culvert, but it needs to be done to the, to the satisfaction of the standard of the township. So for, for sure, that, that definitely is a concern.
Mr. Mayor.
So we're asking to amend the property.
Wow.
By law, right?
So.
Sites have. Site plans, sorry. What they're asking to store the chip truck there over the winter. Or bylaws allow you to store a vehicle there or a, a chip truck there. You, we just had this discussion last week, or Monday night, about RVs and all this. But does, does the current bylaw allow the storing of, of a chip truck with propane tanks there still?
So through, so through the Chair, the site plan control agreement, you're, you're pressing a bylaw to enter into a second like control agreement. By default, you are saying, yes, that is permitted to be there, you're asking for that specific location.
To the Chair, I would also add that it's not a recreational.
No, no, I, I took that back.
And we have a refreshment vehicle by law that this applied with as well. So I, I feel confident saying this.
Okay, great, that's all right. I knew it wasn't recreational, but I misspoke, sorry.
Sometimes when I'm talking about the negative two terms, because they're both so popular right now.
Nobody else has anything, I, I'd still like to ask one more to, to, I think it's going to end up going to the C A O, but, but Wendy, it might be you as well. When we, when we get to the size of this, I noticed on their site plan that they've hand drawn. You know, there's eighty seven feet by forty feet, but it doesn't actually give stall dimensions for those six spots. It, it shows stall definition, but it's a gravel parking lot. And it lists one of them as barrier free, but it's the smallest one. So when we, when we enter into a six, a six spot parking lot is, is what we're looking at, okay? Because in my mind, a six spot parking lot's paved, has curbing, has one entrance and, and is lined. So at what point do you, do you actually have to have a formal parking lot versus an eighty seven by forty patch graph?
To the Chair, I know that the depth of the parking space is five and a half meters. I can look up the width of the parking space, but I know I did the calculations on the original site plan. I know that this one is wider than the original one, so I'm confident that it's going to comply. I think the stones actually end up being wider than what they're required. But also note that this is not a scaled drawing, so that being on the, the space that looks the shortest. I think they're just required to have one barrier free and ask them to show that there will be one barrier free.
Under, so under, under our bylaw, there's no requirement then for, for curbing for stalls or an actual sized barrier free area on a parking lot that is six spots.
So through, through, through the Chair, looking at at the schedule B exhibit one, they're, they're defining those, those spots. So it will certainly be up to the, to the owner to, to have those defined and marked in better than they certainly are currently up at that location. So that, that may be some type of nylon rope you, you know, that, that actually defines those particular spots. However, remember it is a committee's discretion, if you, if you want that parking lot paved.
Mr. Mayor.
I guess the thing that's bothering me is that this is completely different standard here for this setup and this parking situation compared to the standard that we insisted in our site plan agreement in New Exford. In New Exford, we have a clearly defined entrance. We have a clearly defined parking lot. We have clearly defined parking spaces at the, at the now, I, I, again, I, I don't know whether that was just done by the owner to his standards or whether it was done to our standards, but I think because of the extensive discussions that we had around that development in New Exford, it was our standard in the site plan agreement that established the definition of the parking lot and how the parking lot would be constructed. And I mean, there was a fair amount of excavation of material before the gravel was laid, where I think in this particular case, the gravel was just laid on top of the sod. So I mean, it, it's a completely, two different standards completely.
And, and I guess going back to what, what I was asking before is I'm, I'm in my mind, I'm trying to compare this one to any other commercial establishment. Would we allow a brand new parking lot that has six parking spots to be constructed this way? And, and would this be all that we were asking, just for them to throw some, you know, throw some gravel down and that would be okay?
So.
Let me put it, can I just say it one, one other way then? Do we, do we have a, do we have a, a parking area, like a bylaw that, that at some point it, it kicks in like four spots, five spots, six spots, where, where different conditions in the site plan would, would actually then kick in? Where it does have to be paved or it does have to be curved or or can they just, can anybody just build a gravel parking lot?
So to the Chair, I'm, I'd like, let, let, let me be blunt, committee and council when they enter into a site plan control agreement can establish whatever rules they deem reasonable un- under that kind of control. So there, there, there did not appear to be any concern with six spots on a gravel parking lot with the original agreement. But if.
So I think.
If it's like, if that, like, if that is a concern.
I would, I would say so, a parking area for more than four vehicles does trigger the site plan control agreement. And it can be constructed in crushed stone, asphalt, paving, concrete, paving stones or similar materials. And shall be maintained to reduce the raising of dust and scattering of stones. But like the dimensions of parking space, it looks like there's more than enough width there to, to have six spaces. I don't think they need to be, I, I don't think our zoning bylaw dictates that they have to have the lines in the spaces. You could certainly require that as a part of the site plan control agreement.
Feeling, nobody else is hitting on it, just so.
The, on, on the other hand, the entire hall is, is not lined.
Certainly wasn't one.
Let's track down.
Okay, so we're asking for approval of the site plan and to allow permanency or, or full time storage. That's the recommendation.
Yep, the recommendation is that the site plan be.
So does anyone else have any further discussion on on the site plan or the storage?
I guess just, so did they actually end up paying the at least hundred dollars for the, for the extra additional driving minutes there now?
To the Chair, yes, when, when we learned of the additional entrance way, we asked them to submit an application and be, be so that our roads permitting going review the site. Wasn't comfortable approving it until committee and council approved the amended site plan control agreement.
And you just say that they're okay with the design and what's coming together. Yeah. Counselor? Wait in the vote. Counselor?
I have nothing.
Counselor?
Well, I, I'm, they were going ahead and approving the site plan. I don't have a problem considering the credit, but I do have a problem with their, it appears that they're, they're not living up to the agreement of the site plan that we we had, haven't got a defined entrance way is what was supposed to be on the first place. State, parking area is not.
Parking area is not very well defined and. I think we're gonna keep having. These located in different areas. I think we've got to get a little stricter about when the parking lot's being put in, how it's being put in. As being put in proper rather than just. That will be dumped on and graded off, called it a parking lot. That way it should have been excavated out in proper. Grading stone, putting in proper surface stone, putting in. Back it in at least portable cement curb set in to define. The parking. Not really living up to what I tried to do in the agreement.
To to Wendy or whomever on staff, if committee so chose at this point, could we ask, would it be okay for us to ask for? Individual parking spot definition via portable concrete curb or? Is that what you?
Yeah, something. I'm sure we gotta stop where we gotta commit and stuff.
Uh, through the chair, yes, I think that's.
If we wanted to go back, we could ask for that.
The other thing is, Mr. Chair, there's no, I don't think there's any pressure for time here because. And the only pressure is that. Their original agreement requires that they remove these things by December the first. Which is coming up and we won't meet again before December the first. Council will meet at the end of November. Maybe the way to handle this is to give it. Is to give the recommendation sort of. Conditional that it 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 will condition conditionally, it will go to council at the end of the month, provided that. We can get certain improvements made to the definition of the parking lot. The entrance way off Walker Street, I think it, you know, I mean, there's no reason for the entrance way to be the full eighty seven feet of the parking lot, that's for sure. So they would have three weeks roughly to get those. Corrections made and bring those we we would get. We would bring this forward to council, provided that those things were done between now and then.
I have no problem with proving it. They're shutting down for for the season longer. I think if we had an agreement. These improvements begun before they can open up again next year, so. Just go ahead and approve it. Have that condition and they have to meet site plan control agreements.
Is I I'm not very familiar with with the the requirements for parking lots, temporary or permanent. If there's one barrier free. For accessibility purposes, does that mean that no one can park in that spot to allow for wheelchairs to get around the barriers on all other? Spots like and if we require barriers at all five spots minus the one barrier free spot. Are we just creating an issue for people to? Get to the food truck from their vehicle. And over a curb that really made it maybe isn't necessary for a small parking lot.
The chair, I'm not. Sorry, I'm not sure what requirements of a barrier free parking space that I can look at. Want to know what requirements are for parking in the space and.
So does barrier free mean all of them have no concrete barriers? Or does that mean one spot has to not have one so that? A an emergency vehicle can get in and not have to go over curb or a gurney or a wheelchair or anything like that? I don't know enough about the accessibility standards, but I I I know that if we add concrete barriers. Then we could create a bottleneck where there's an issue in the future. And it's an expensive, those things are two hundred fifty dollars used plus trucking. To gravel firm enough.
The chair knows requirement that the space would be wider, so like a ramp could get down from a truck, whether or not there could be a. A concrete barrier at the end of course, I can't see why not, but I not. I'm not confident on my, I don't think I know enough about it, but I can I can look at it and provide that before if the committee recommends it. Council adopt by law.
My my comment was mostly, you know, I I don't know if we should be. Adding another expense that might cause issues like a concrete barrier, which I'm I'm not quite even sure if it was added to the recommendation.
Well, I I look like you wanted to speak.
Well, through 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 the chair, I, you know, I sort of. Sort of getting the sense that this may be sort of a a two step approach. And that maybe the focus should be on whether the if there are any concerns with that. Trailer being stored there over the winter. Maybe that sort of approval can be done. This month and it looks to me like. Committee is really not satisfied with. The outlay of that site plan and probably want some additional. Conditions and restrictions placed on to to better regulate that activity next season. I don't believe that there should be any kind of issue with. Sort of i i indicated or passing. You know, a resolution that would that would allow that. That unit to be stored there over the season and, you know, look over the over the winter to actually amend that. Site plan to get committee and council a little more comfortable with the with looking at that.
Yeah, so through the chair, that that sounds more powerful because, you know, every time they got it down, something it looks like they, you know, they had a plan. Regardless of certainly they didn't do it that way as well, and they've done extra data, extra things. That's a more valid that way than than we're guessing. We we won't, yeah, they they aren't going to be laid out essentially.
I agree with what. He always saying, and but I'd also say we should look at the site plan agreement, building on what the the mayor said, building on. The site plan agreement we had for the new trip chip truck in Johnstown. I don't feel we should be imposing. Lesser requirements on, you know, this chip truck than we did in in Johnstown. So they, if we could go with what was being recommended, let it's let it be stored there for the winter. But then we have a comparison of the the two site plan agreements so that we are treating them the same, because I think everybody just wants to be treated the same.
I. The reason we were, the reason we were so strict with the the Wexford site was because right off the bat immediately. There was public pushback. Where with Wendy's, there was not. Whatsoever. So I I think that had a lot to do with the with the stringency of the Wex. I'm not happy that the that the driveway was built, used ahead of ahead of the ahead of the agreement. I've heard no, I've heard no complaints throughout the throughout the area from any any concerns and. Other than I'm talking residential citizens, not business. Citizens, I I've heard no complaints about it, so. I'm 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 prepared to move the or to support the recommendation, but I am, as the mayor said earlier, I'm quite reluctant to do so, just. We've over the last three or four months, we've had several issues where people have gone ahead and done things. And then tried to beg forgiveness after. I don't like that kind of way of doing things. I like everything upfront to start with. Anyway, and 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 one one other thing was that the reason we gave these people time. To do put these things in place, it was their request to see how their business was going to do, whether or not it was worthwhile supporting the unit there all the way. I'm quite happy it is. That way, but. But that that was why the the conditions were were sold on on the drainage. Situation because. We all felt that. Why should they spend the amount of money to do all that before they opened when they may not be there next year? So anyway, again, I'm 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 willing to support the recommendation. However, I I do think that the driveway should be defined. I I guess both of that places now.
Are are you are you suggesting a recommendation? A recommendation accepted the way it is?
No, I'm I'm I I think I think our C A O brought up an extremely good point, not to be considered in the recommendation.
Split them up, do storages, recommendation tonight, approve storage.
Could be.
Push like plan till.
But I mean, I just. It's a chip stand, spark lot, we'll be going all around, we're going Angeles. You need standard, what we're preaching, does it meet the standard bargain? I mean, look at the chip stand, it was at a price point, sitting over in the corner. I mean, this is just in, I thought the parking good, I didn't hear any complaints by no one. I mean, I'll go along with it. I would have did the recommendation what they what staff has recommended the first time, but I will go along with storage now and we're looking to the park. I'll go along with.
So I think that's a general nodding of heads then for approval approving the recommendation, right? Or approving the part of the recommendation that allows storage. But that we revisit the site plan control agreement. At another meeting or. Or do we want to define that this meeting with what what our expectations are? You have a suggestion there?
So through through the chair, I would. But just leaving you staff and we will come back at the I think next CDC meeting. With the with that line, I think that we're, we have a better understanding of some of the concerns that that raised. Try to get those. Incorporated into the into the second.
Thank you, Connor.
Am I able to move it as recommended by the staff to avoid any further delays? And we could vote on it and see are there any issues with it as it's written? If if that would be something people.
You can move it, you can move it, you find a second or and then we call a vote and it could pass or it could fail.
I would move that.
I'll say. Okay, so is there a further discussion of the recommendation as threatened?
What if we move, no, well, hang on then, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna be voting against that because that's that's contrary contrary to what we have just talked about thirty seconds ago.
It's just to vocalize any opposition, so it can be easier to narrow.
Yeah, it's moving the second, and so I'm I'm gonna be voting against it.
Is there further discussion before I call a question?
Well, this is the discussion I'd like to have the staff here, so we don't have to listen to it again and again later. If you have concerns, just kind of say them.
We did.
Right again, summarize it.
We already did.
I told the point, so it's easy later.
Uh, the questions on the table, is there further? Is there further discussion? All right, so calling the question to the recommendation as it's written, Wendy, will you read it again, please?
That committee recommend that, Tom, without the bylaw to amend site plan control agreement, choose your two one, that's two six, I'll go.
Right, so all in favor? Two opposed? Rest, okay, so that fails.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the staff be given authorization to allow the. Trailer in the, I'm just gonna say trailer now. To remain past December the first. Pending. Pending the development of a of a of a revised site plan agreement.
Can can you include the tanks in that?
I really, I really would like to see the tanks moved, to be honest with you. For the winter, so you mean I I you have to think of the exposure here, these are live propane tanks sitting there, nobody around them. It does become a risk.
Removal of the tank, so. Trailer stays.
Tanks, no, okay.
So you need a second.
Yep.
Second by Greg Modler. Discussion. All in favor? Go, okay, opposed, sorry, one opposed. Now we need to deal with, and you're gonna bring a staff report, so you don't need a motion for a staff report, you? All right, so we are on to number two, which is application for site plan control for thirty five Fraser Road.
I'm writing my notes so I understand them later. Um, okay, we've got another application for a site plan control agreement, this one at thirty five Fraser Road for the installation. A seventy meter self support telecommunications facility. Um, there is a justification report and site plan provided by the applicant, attaching your agenda. Just note that as better undertaking telecommunications infrastructure is not subject to site plan control. Therefore, site plan control bylaws have no effect on or do not apply to intended sites in the past. The township has used a site plan control group process where a telecommunications site is proposed. Freedom Mobile is agreeable to providing a letter of undertaking that would include the requirements of our standard site plan control agreement we would use in this case. And a proposed letter is also included in the agenda message.
Thank you. Okay, so let's start discussion, Chris.
February, it feels like it's groundhog day all over again. It's because we goes through the federal. That we don't say, you know, this is good for, say, ten years or something like that, is that direct? I can't remember why we we talked this before about, you know, we have all these ones permitted out there, they don't ever never seem like a date potentially, is there a way we can put a limit to that and say that's fair? Or one with this, so I don't know if we can.
So through the chair, they have included a clause in their letter of undertaking that's proposed. I suspect this is the closest we're gonna get to it, I'll read it though. Tree agrees with the township may issue a request to clarify whether or not facility is still required to support wireless network activity. Freedom will respond within thirty days of receiving the request and will provide any available information on the future status or planned decommissioning of the facility if applicable. Where freedom confirms that the facility is redundant, freedom and the township will mutually agree on a timeframe to remove the system and all associated buildings and equipment from the site. Removal will occur no later than two years from when the facility is.
So how do they, I guess, yeah, sounds good. Councilor Lillow?
No, I'm good.
Council Cameron?
No, been answered, thank you.
Council Hunter? Greg? Connor? Mr. Mayor?
So you could, my question is this, the previous one that we dealt with, was it Freedom as well through the chair, was it from Freedom as well? Yes, it was, okay, so these guys have been around this block, they know the story. Is this is this owner also reluctant? Or is it just Freedom saying we don't do these site plan agreements anymore, we'll give you a letter of understanding?
Uh, through the chair, so I am not speaking with the owner directly, it's actually they've authorized Forbes Brothers construction to.
Act as a.
Act as their agent at Forbes Brothers.
Okay, so the owner is out of the question here, all right, so the next part of my question comes this way. So we have a recommendation here that the council accept the letter of undertaken from Freedom Mobile regarding a telecommunications thirty five Fraser. Addressing the facility location, structure, maintenance, et cetera. Is it part of the recommendation that we will return their? Application fee for a site plan control agreement, is that part of the recommendation?
Through the chair, no.
Okay, we're keeping that then.
Through the chair, they they've agreed to pay it and suspend the site plan. Control application, knowing that this is the likely or possible outcome, I think there's administration fee that's fair. The the work is close to the same.
One further question, Mr. Chairman. Can you tell me how these letters of understanding are going to be? Filed in the corporate record, will they be filed in the same manner as if they were? Will they be filed in the same manner as if they were site plan agreements? How how are we going to uh track that up until a certain point we had site plan agreements? And then at that point, we went to letters of understanding for all additional towers. How are we filing and tracking this in our corporate record, if I could, Mister Chairman, thank you.
Mister Chairman, that's a good question. We have an electronic filing system that makes it pretty easy to search um a file of a property on it. Um, so I would likely file this with site plan control agreement the same way I would it, this is not gonna be registered on the title of a property like a site plan control agreement would.
Okay, so in 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 our corporate record, do we attach? So a site plan unit would be filed on title in the registry office. But these letters of understanding are not going to be filed on title in the registry office, could they be? From a legal point of view.
Uh, through the chair, I I wanted to say no, because we don't have the owner's authorization to register it on title.
Isn't that interesting? So we have no way. The the interesting thing about that is that. It raises all kinds of questions, really, when you can write down to it. A person that may be wanting to purchase that piece of land five years from now may not even know that that. Uh, letter of understanding for that tower exists and is filed in the municipal office.
Through the chair, the letter of undertaking is provided by Freedom Mobile, not by the owner of the property, so the owner of the property doesn't have any obligations. In this letter, it's just Freedom Mobile. Um, also, Freedom Mobile has leased part of the land on the property and has a separate agreement with the property owner, so.
Leased would be filed on title. To registry office.
I suppose it would, I I I don't know the the lease agreement.
Mister Chairman, I'm I'm prepared to accept the recommendation in view of what we learned at the last discussion, when we were talking about the one on County Road forty four. But there's a whole number of issues here that I'd I'd like to somehow ask the, if if we could get some. Well, I don't want to put more work to the staff, but really like to know how how we're resolving this. I think the feds have created more problems here by taking the power of site plan control away from us. Then they have really solved and they've dumped a lot of problems in our hands, and we're going to see a lot of. Yeah, you sure are too.
With that, with this illegal issue.
You're darn right, it's a legal issue, that's the point that I'm raising here right now. Because there are all kinds of problems that can occur with this letter of understanding.
Council Highland.
One question here, here all, looks like we're gonna have lots of weeks, let us have a second and come forward. And. And as councils move on, these things last for twenty twenty year years. Can staff develop electronic filing system that's gonna show up? All the time with these, all these letters of understanding are going to be filed filed in the future staff at any time someone's brought up, they just click. There's all the letters of understanding that we have, but they're easy to find.
Through the chair, sure, I can set up a separate file to put all of these in.
Through 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 the tier, there there may be the potential. You know, I have to check with the M G I S, we might be able to put that on onto the on onto that property as like what we'll call it a permit. So to speak, that that there's a note of a letter of undertaking. So that when you click on that property. Issue raises that.
They should just have some easy way for staff and future council to identify. All these letters of understanding where they're attached to.
You you had mentioned before that that letters of understanding would possibly go in with site, not site plan, well, site plan control agreements for towers, so correct?
Through the chair, I I keep a file for site plan control agreements organized by by year and I could file these with those. Our, I mean, our file whole system, it's really easy to search by property and have um any agreements or some bylaw amendments or anything associated with that property that come up in. Search to get some electronic filing system, so it's it's easily searchable, I'm not I'm not concerned with being able to find this later. I think the trouble we come across now is our electronic filing system, while I know there are bylaws from like the beginning of time in that filing system for. Um, uh, severance isn't on the bylaw amendments and planning documents, it only goes to the office two thousand and twelve, the rest are paper files and they're so far now going forward, I have no concern to being able to find it.
That's right, yeah. So it sounds like within the municipal corporate records, we have a mechanism to attach to attach the agreement to the property. But within the public record, i.e. the registry office, we don't.
And.
That's what it sounds like.
Which would my question would be, if I bought a a piece of property and I had my lawyer check for all the problems, would he be able to find it?
Well, he would only check the registry.
That's correct, you're right.
So through, so 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 through the chair, uh, if if you were going to uh give that check, you you would find that there is a lease agreement with the owner and Freedom Mobile.
By checking with the registry.
Yes. You're not gonna know if there's a letter of undertaking between the municipality and Freedom Mobile. Which is a different.
Which with mobile.
Correct.
Property, oh, okay, but but the lease would be fine.
But the but but the lease, I would.
The lease is filed, I think that's obvious.
Correct. And 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 really no different.
I'll get there.
Would it not execute?
Mister Modler?
I thought the last time we talked about this, we. The the way the letter was written, it was through the lawyer representing for and said that they didn't have to go into a site plan agreement. It was just their legal, their legal opinion. That they didn't have to do this, I think, we ever pursue that if they're if they were in fact right?
Through 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 the chair, our legal partner asking for a pair.
Okay, great, that's all that's, great, thank you.
Yes, move the recommendation, move second the recommendation, Council Hunter, any more discussion, Chris, were you looking to say something before?
I think the lease thing.
Uh, further discussion? Okay, done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any one else on that one?
Yeah.
Alright, Wendy, application for severance for six twenty one street. Roll back.
Thank you, Mister Chair, uh, so the township receives an application for severance at six twenty one East Street in Village Cardinal. For a semi detached dwelling to provide for its whole formership. Uh, the property is within the settlement policy area of the county's official plan and its own residential second density. Um, we received two written comments from the public through the county. And um they're included in the agenda package, comments include concerns with the site dirt setback and road frontage for the proposed lot. Uh, staff have confirmed that the setbacks and road frontage comply with its own pilot vision.
Um, and and I and you may have mentioned it there, um, I was trying to listen, I was trying to read at the same time. Um, uh, variance on that property approved that that approved from forty one percent. Or at forty one percent from thirty percent, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, uh, just so everyone knows that, um, okay, let's start start the conversation, Chris, any?
Move back.
Council Little.
Pretty hard to see anything, it's all fits in.
Council Cameron?
Um, no, I at at this point, I.
Council Hunter?
Can't go united, we can load all over.
Mister Modler?
I know what uh, Council Hunter said.
Connor?
No question.
Mister Mayor, so it was the um, it was the minor variance committee that granted the increase in the lot coverage from thirty to forty one percent, was it?
Correct.
So we didn't have any control over that, and that's why we've got what we've got. Um, I I'd just like Mister Chair to find out if there's any possible way that we can short circuit this kind of a process where it comes to us after the fact. I know when you're building a duplex, it's very difficult to get a severance in advance of building it because the. The dividing line becomes the common wall between the two units, I understand that. But is there not some way that we could require that there be a kind of a pre notification that that's what we're gonna do with this piece of property? Uh, or did we know that at the time that the building permit was issued here, what was gonna happen to staff?
Yes, through the chair, we we knew that a semi detached building was proposed on this lot. And that was transparent in the application for minor variance and the uh, the public notice for the minor variance indicators for semi detached as well.
Yes, but did did we also know that a severance would be would be requested after the fact?
Yes, we knew that the owner intended for severance.
Okay, so so through the chair, if I may, knowing all of those things in advance, is there not something that we could do? I mean, I think with this person that that wrote this letter on that we see on page thirty six of sixty six, I think he makes a very valid point. Um, if. In a case of fire, depending on how far the uh, the the eve extends over the wall. In the case of a fire, the firefighters will not be able to do the job between the two houses. I mean, the this getting, these kinds of distances between the two houses is getting to be a a worrisome thing for me. Uh, I'm not, I guess there's not much we can do here.
I think, though, that's that was covered, correct, like it conforms, it's.
Yeah, it conforms, but 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 that leads me to wonder is is our standard correct?
Building standard, though, correct?
So through 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 the chair, that 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 distant setback is a kind of zoning by law?
Yeah.
So uh, the the minor variance had no impact with respect to to using that setback. That is the that is the standard setback.
It's actually a little bit setback.
Slightly.
It's a little bit.
That doesn't, that doesn't speak to whether it's correct or not. It is not correct to have such short, short distances between buildings.
Then we share the discussion.
Yeah, that's a separate, separate discussion.
Yeah, I understand that.
That'd be a C B L discussion.
Well, that that. That is where the uh, the setbacks.
Yeah.
Are is is in zoning by law.
Right, so that's why I was gonna say, yeah.
Just the.
Please, Mister Chairman, we have a recommendation in front of us.
We do, Wendy, would you read that again?
Uh, this is chair, that committee recommend the council recommend in favor of severance, E dash one thirty two dash twenty one.
Okay, so short of any further discussion. You're moving, moved by Mister Modler, seconded by John Hunter, we've called the question, if there's no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Connor? Opposed or in favor?
I'm standing.
Staying as opposed.
I'm not sure that our procedural bylaw laws are stated.
Okay, I heard the discussion and the. Protocol pushed, okay.
Okay, moving on to uh, number four, which is application for zoning by law amendment, uh, seventy one thirty one, County Row twenty two.
So we received a zoning by law amendment application um for it, and we went to one county two, so this is to fulfill conditions. Um, of a seven three to a surplus farm dwelling. Um, that was filed with the counties in January of twenty twenty one. So the zoning by law amendment would prohibit on the agricultural parcel, um, any non agricultural use in the future. Um, and would also address the deficient lot size, I don't probably don't remember back to January twenty twenty one, the specific severance application, maybe you do, but the lot size was um. Smaller than what was required for agricultural use to begin with, so in order to sever office surplus dwell, we had to keep that residential parcel to the smallest size. Um, allowed for residential use in the agricultural zone, which is two point four seven acres, but it still leaves that agricultural parcel smaller than the forty hectares that is required. So this zoning by law amendment would also address um that as well, so um, the. Committee recommendation at this point is just, um, we're we're just asking for committee to allow staff to schedule a public meeting. And I also want to know that because the severance was initially granted in January of twenty twenty one, it's going to lapse in January of twenty twenty two. So I carefully looked at the timelines and we are cutting it close, but we have time to.
Mister Mayor, so. What has happened in the interim period of time that that we're just picking this up again now? Through the chair, I mean.
Through the chair, I received the the application for zoning amendment late last week.
Oh, for goodness sakes, so the the problems with the with the applicant then?
Uh. I I don't know what.
So second question, I recall the discussion from January, if that's when it first came. And I'm looking at the the drawing that we have on page forty eight, or the little diagram that we have on page forty eight or sixty six. One of the issues that concerned me at the time was the various outbuildings that are here. And uh, I've been by this property, props a dozen times in since January as I go to and from Ottawa. And a lot of these outbuildings are in a really dilapidated state. And I remember the discussion in January where I said. Uh, and I and I know that it's not likely to be something that comes up in a public meeting, but I thought that we registered it when we gave our our consent. Uh, to approve the register and when we gave our consent to county was that these derelict uh, dilapidated buildings were to be removed from the residential property, from the property. That's being severed. So I don't see that issue addressed anyplace here, or is that something that we just wait to see whether it comes up at the public meeting and if it doesn't come up at the public meeting? The severance goes through without our uh, without that, uh, without that issue being flagged, how how do we? How do we deal with and get that issue on the as as a condition to the severance?
Wendy?
Thank you, Mister Chair, and so I, with the severance application, the um, applicant had indicated that there were two buildings. That were planned to be demolished and as a condition of the severance, we've required that those buildings be demolished. So I confirmed with the um, agent of the owner and they confirmed that those two buildings. Um, one has been demolished and the other is almost demolished, so I guess it's a work in in progress. But that condition hasn't been cleared yet by staff, so we'll need to confirm that it's been demolished before, but.
Okay, yes, except for the fact that there are five of them and there's only and and what we've heard, we've only heard about two. Two of them. Now, maybe the other three are in better shape, I don't know that, uh, so through the chair, has our have our uh, bylaw staff or our uh. Uh, chief building official staff had a chance to look at those five buildings and determine the shape of them all, we do have an abandoned in uh, building bylaw.
Through the chair, for the severance, I can only speak to the two that are required to be demolished, I'm not, I'm not sure if by law.
Which is, does it say which ones?
Yeah, uh, with the severance application, they tried provided a sketch and said the ones marked with an X have been collapsed. And the condition on the severance is that the collapsed buildings on the severed parcel, as indicated in the application, be removed.
Two, right, two?
Yeah.
Not five, two?
Not five.
Not five.
Is that, is that information in our package?
Um, through the chair, no, that information is not packaged within the the severance file.
Letting know that. Is there? I'm just wondering if we can find which build, which buildings are marked with an X. So we can, so I know on my.
So this information is available to the public, I don't mind showing it or passing it around, um, it would be in an agenda package. Um, gosh, the committee wouldn't have met in January, it would be in a in a twenty twenty agenda package, late twenty twenty. I don't know when the, how far from the council's recommendation would committee have scheduled the hearing, so it's tough to say, in the late twenty twenty agenda package. Um, but it is available to the public. Or at request, I call it the township office, someone had interest.
So it's passed around.
Yeah, I'm passing it over, so.
I can, I can now mark them.
Comment? No, I I think one of those is that they're destroying is this old mile mile home joined together, which the.
Yeah.
And for other reasons, it'd be made right up for sure.
Is that one of the ones that's?
I think so, when I look at the map, it's just, I think the picture here is not exactly.
Hold sales on the room, Mr. Chair. I wonder, when he comes back, I wonder if we can go back to the question of. Because I I don't recall at the at the January uh discussion. That there was a limit as to which ones of these would be removed. I'm pleased that the that the applicant has has offered to remove two, but. What I see when I drive by it, it almost looks to me like five of five should be gone.
Do you have that information in front of you, Wendy, uh to that? Recommendation or what the agreement was that it said two, not five?
Uh to the chair, I have um the county's decision with the list of conditions. On it, I can photo copy this, but for the for the building, it just says that the collapsed buildings on the separate parcel, as indicated in the application. Be removed and as indicated in the application would be the drawing on our C A O is.
Okay, so that was, they agreed in their application to to remove two, but. I think my my comment in January was. Take a look at them all, so I'd like to go when the C A O comes back and just find out whether our. Uh bylaw officer and our chief building official has had a look at the other two. Reason I say that is be. Cause we have at least three buildings that I know that have collapsed since we passed that by law. I didn't even know there was a mobile mobile home there. Says two, says two, uh it was, uh it says two old mobile homes joined together, so it looks like two of them. Yeah, I didn't even know there's any there. I don't know.
It's hard to tell, right, like the layout here is. No, that's a good point.
Yeah, it's uh it's pretty clear. Where's the mobile homes? Very hard. So the two mobile homes is not. The two mobile homes joined together is not. They're not marked with an X as being removed, no.
So it is the on your diagram. Uh in the package, it is shed falling down, it's marked with the next. And I would say that the one to the right of that shed, tenon wood siding.
Tenon wood siding, right?
Yes.
Yes. So the mobile homes are still there?
I I would, I would say that the mobile home, yes.
Mister Chairman, I guess the point that I'm making, if if this is going to be severed, I just like to see it cleaned up as as the goal.
Did you have a question for the C A O, C A O about whether by law? I don't want you to miss that question. You can.
Uh so uh through the chair, I I'm not sure on 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 that at this particular time. But certainly with respect to um signing off on that severance. Uh there will be an inspection made to ensure that those two are that have been demolished. And I I would expect at that time that the that the others would be looked at as far as the state of repair.
It's good for me, Mister Chairman. And where are we at? I haven't, I came this way, right? Yes, so then councillor.
No, I. Make sure cleaned up, but they agreed to clean up, clean up. My question is here, here. There are severance, there's relating to agricultural lots. Being created, it's less than the forty, forty. I think something's gotta be changed about that, there's a lot of these smaller farm farms. Twenty five, thirty acres of people are wanting to sever off. Sell the land off at the price of the land, this land all being bought up by by large farming operations. I don't think we should we get blocking. For cause of more red tape, farmers trying to add up, pick up these twenty five, thirty acre blocks and clean them up and keep them in agriculture. We keep doing it, doing this, but. They're just gonna grow off the brush, it'll be more of a fire hazard and just an unsightly thing. Somebody, if there's land there and it's going to operational farming operation, whether it's fifteen acres or a hundred fifty acres. I I don't think we should be putting roadblocks and allowing them to buy this land and get it in back going to a farm. Doesn't seem much, there are a lot of people and they're lucky to say, well, let's farm a lot twenty eight or twenty. Twenty acres of land added if you're operating. Equipment and stuff, you got another twenty acres of corn you can put it, put in there. That's another three thousand dollar profit probably from the year you can add with the same, but you're you're running. And they're buying all this land that's close to other land that they own. Yes, they're separated by roads or something, but it's right across the road from two hundred acres they own on the other side of the road, so. I think we should be looking at these in a different light, saying whether they're. A forty acre agricultural viable farm, when they're being added for a firm in operation, so. Third severance, I have no problem. I really think when we're asking for a heck acre lots all over the country, all we're getting is an acre and a half of of brush and stuff. Half acre or so that we maintain, so.
The, I just wanna make sure that you clarify this, we're, what what are discussions around right now is scheduling a public meeting, right? That's that's what we're trying to get to, because we're talking about a lot of other stuff other than public meeting, right? Okay, so let's get to the, let's get to the recommendation. Okay, so can you read the recommendation again?
Uh no tech report, didn't have staff recommendations with it, but I, if I'm wrong, prepare. Um that committee directs staff to schedule a public meeting date for the zoning amendment application filed for the land side seventy one thirty one county road twenty two.
Move her. Move second. All in favor? We're good on that one. All right, so now we are on number five, five. Which is the application for zoning by law amendment thirty two oh nine county road two, Terrapin Contracting Limited. And I just wanna take two seconds to um welcome Nabi and Hussein. Who have both been patiently waiting while we've been talking about many other things, so. Uh welcome Nabi and and Hussein to uh to the meeting.
Thank you.
Um I think for. For for you both, um committee may have some questions and I think if they do, I. I will allow them to ask you questions directly, but but I'm not really gonna ask for any comments or any participation unless there's questions for you directly, okay guys? So Wendy, if you can, you can give us a little update or a little background.
Thank you, through chair, so we received a zoning by law amendment application um for the copy of thirty two oh nine county road two. Um the application is to rezone the subject lands through the cannabis production and processing facility. Um as additional, as an additional permitted use, um. Uh and we have pleasure of uh hearing from Nabi, Hussein from Terrapin Farms um earlier this year. Uh we don't have a complete application just yet. We are still waiting for a servicing report and a completed site plan that's gonna show the proper setbacks. Of the the building to the to the lot line, um but we. We would like to, we're receiving committee's approval to schedule a public meeting once that complete application has been received. I um I know that the applicants are anxious to get started with the development. And we'd just like to help them proceed as quickly as possible, once we have all the information we need, we'll be able to go ahead and schedule that meeting.
Just before we begin, um I'm seeing mess with the volume. Um Nabi, can you just, can you just um say something so that we can make sure that if you do speak that we can hear it before we start?
Yep, can you guys hear me?
Yeah. It's not very loud, but.
Oh, maybe uh.
It's coming through there instead of the TV.
Is it better?
No, not really, I think it's probably alright.
Oh, okay.
You can hear us clearly, though.
Yeah, yeah, I can hear you very clearly.
Um we'll just have to be very quiet. Uh so let's, I'm gonna go around the table in my usual manner, so I'm gonna start with Chris, anything?
No, I mean, I for the, I mean, this is.
Hold on, before we begin, because this one can get out of hand as well, this is just to schedule a public meeting as well, right?
Correct, this is to schedule a public meeting once uh we have a.
Yes, okay, now.
Even that this is just a public meeting, um uh you know, request and with the location where we're creating the position here, I don't have any questions.
Okay, councillor Steve.
I just have one, and it could be, I couldn't find it. Do, I I couldn't, I might not over oversight. Is your share well on that property? Or does he have his own well?
To staff.
Uh to the chair, uh yes, and that's in the, you you would have read that in Nova Tech's report, um that the. Says, I understand that the subject lands are to develop on basis of private services for both water supply and sewage disposal. And the water supply is currently provided through a shared well with another property, so something staff weren't aware of. When we started our three consultations, when we were reviewing the stormwater management uh report, there was a paragraph that indicated it was a a share of all. So I'm, we did indicate that we needed a servicing report as part of their application, we had received by now, so we're still waiting for that information to further review.
And one other thing, and and I'll let it go on page sixty three or sixty six. Uh section four point four two halfway down, it says, uh all these policies are not effective yet. And aside from the Congress located along the river, which is understood to be phased out, I don't understand, those Congresses have. When you say phased out, they have a at least until twenty thirty three, I do believe, on that. So I'm not sure where where you're getting your information, but being phased out.
Yep, so through the chair, this report was prepared by um a planner from the applicant. And I think this is the information from our official plan, which I believe indicates that those uh the. I that that it is likely phased out, sorry, I don't know the exact wording, but it indicates that in our official plan. Yes.
Point, point of information, Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I I think to use the term phased out is incorrect. Those leases are twenty year leases, they have no right of renewal. But that does not necessarily mean that they won't be renewed.
Right.
Which is different than there's there's deemed deemed to be phased out. Slight nuance there. And by the way, those leases are now about. Five years old, so there's about fifteen years left on.
Twenty thirty three.
Twenty thirty three, I do believe, yes.
Well, Wendy's searching for something, so.
Uh through the chair, it might take me, I don't know exactly where the official plan is, so I will look for.
Oh, that's fine, I know, I couldn't see it, no.
Yes, uh okay, uh I believe I know the answer to this, I just want confirmation on it. That the public meeting will be called, and at the public meeting, the residents can express their concerns, questions and so on. And then they will be acted upon uh formally like we did in the uh in the uh last, the last. Episode we were through.
Through the chair, yes, that's correct, we'll hold a public meeting, however, Wendy's given the opportunity to speak at a public meeting, Nova Tech will provide a final report. That's gonna take into consideration any of the comments.
And it'll show their actions as well, their recommendations.
Yes.
Against, okay, uh then I will save all my questions until later.
Councillor Hunter?
I have no problem with.
Uh through the chair, I couldn't find, after a brief look, are there any wells or proposed wells on this property?
Through the chair, I I don't have any additional information about the wells. Um the subject and drainage plan that they provided doesn't show a well on the property, it's just a water management plan indicated. That there was a shared well, we don't have any other information, but we will renew a servicing report, that will give us that.
And and the reason for me asking is. On this property, we're very close to it, I believe, and I might be wrong, but I think I've read that there were. I think shell. Fuel storage, bulk fuel storage tanks, is this west of this property, on this property or? Need it all around this property?
The properties east of where the shells are.
So that that would be just something that I would want the business owners to know. If they're going to be using water from a well in the future. That. That I would be personally concerned about the water quality. In a facility like that.
So Mister Chairman, we're not just talking about scheduling a public meeting, because a public meeting won't be scheduled until we receive. A servicing report. And it's the servicing report that I'm really interested in, because I'm not very happy about. A servicing report which would suggest that the this building and this commercial operation be serviced. By a private well and a private septic system, I don't think that's appropriate. And there is an error on page forty nine of sixty six, on the very last sentence of the of the planning discussion. Where it says that is noted that these municipal services are not readily available to the subject property. Now, if readily available means at this, at the property line, that is correct. But the services, water and sewer, commercial services are available immediately across the road. From the property, now, uh I suppose you could say that it's the responsibility of the municipality. To bring the services to the property boundary and. And perhaps that is one of the requirements that should be dealt with in the servicing plan. Uh because, and may and maybe it's a, it's it's an issue that we'll have to deal with, but. Uh I I take really a a serious issue of trying to service this kind of a commercial operation. Which is heavily water dependent uh on a on a well. And just point of information, the adjoining property. Which surrounds this property on two sides is owned by a different owner. And he's had to drill a new well much deeper than the old well that was on the property, on his property. To service the other two buildings that are on the adjoining property. Because the water quality in the original well wasn't sufficient for a previous tenant. It wasn't sufficient in either quality or quantity for a previous tenant. So I'm not sure how it's even gonna be possible to put a well, a private well on this property and a septic field. And there is another issue. And going back to the second paragraph on page forty nine. We were told that the subject property is approximately point four or five of a hectare, which is one point one acres. And I. I have not seen a. And I, I have not seen a drawing, and I, and I, so I shouldn't criticize. I'm fairly familiar with the property, and I just cannot believe that it's one point one acres. So I'm not sure how this is going to be done. I, I certainly would like to see the boundaries of this property. If the map that we see on page sixty-four of sixty-six is entirely correct, and that's entirely the property that we're looking at, I, i- it looks to me like there's a car lot on the east half of that prop, on the east half of that property.
There definitely isn't a picture.
Right?
There definitely isn't a picture.
Yeah, exactly.
What page are you looking at, Mr. Mayor?
It's under Xander Plan anyways, page two of their report. Which will be, in my package, it's page fifty-two of sixty-six. I don't know if that's the exact one that Mr. Mayor is looking at, but it actually shows a Google image of it with the blue.
And, and at one time, that was, there was a.
Oh, it's still there now, first one.
Um, to the chair, I, I found in our GIS system that the property lines are not correct, which is not uncommon. We don't count on GIS for exact property lines. And I suspect that this is what Xander Plan has used to show this image. I would refer to the septic and grading plan that I included, because it's the closest I have to a site plan to show the committee right now. It is on page sixty-four of sixty-six, and see where it shows the, the building on the property. So the building is on the east side of the property, and then there's open states to the left.
No, no, the building is on the west side of the property, is it not? Where, where's the old County Road Two? I'm, I'm sorry, Wendy, my apologies. So County Road Two. So the septic field that's there right now is in front of the building, and it's between County Road Two and the building then, is it?
Correct.
Well, those, those lot lines are drastically different than the ones that Xander Plan chose in the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, the other thing, of course, is, I don't I know what's wrong here, the, oh geez. Yes, the, the, the arrow marking north is incorrect here. Road Two is at the north, well, that's what it's showing, for goodness sakes. I'm just not reading this map properly. That's all there is to it, my apologies.
The septic's in front?
Septic's in front, so the, the land to the west
Yeah.
is appear, would appear to be vacant land.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's not the way that you think it is, is it?
No.
No, 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 it looks very different than what, and even what the Xander Plan, you know, Plan shows as well. So we are gonna get Mayor's raised an interesting comment in that regarding municipal services to the area, and it is on one side of the road, but not the other side of the road. Will that be part of, like, a servicing report? Like, will that, is there a, will there be a suggestion of something like that in the report?
To the chair, the servicing report is, we think it's gonna suggest it's on private servicing, and it will address water quality and quantity to the site, so.
Definitely been concerns that have been raised here at the table.
Yeah, and that, that report is gonna tell us whether or not there's a sufficient quantity of water, and that the quality of the water is also okay. Um, the I think in considering whether or not municipal services should be brought to the property, we also want to consider that it, it is already a developed lot on private services. It's not a vacant lot, and so it's been on private services up until now.
And will come with a report that gives us some measure of relief or not, of the quality and the quantity of those services.
Correct, and I think after reviewing the report, we may determine whether it's zoning by law or the site plan control stage that maybe the property needs to have its own well located on the, on the property. Or that municipal servicing is most appropriate, but I would, at, at this point, rely on the engineers that are developing servicing.
We, we still have lots of mechanisms to, to get, you know, those restrictions in there, should they be required or needed. This, really ultimately, we, we need to get those done, and we, we're trying to help speed them along a little bit by getting a, by getting a public meeting scheduled.
But that's correct. To, to the chair, I mean, the, the alternative is we wait for this information, and then we need to wait for another committee meeting to get permission to schedule a public meeting. I, I just, I'm hoping to reduce any delays that I had.
The hope would be that when we have our February meeting, the, the full application would be submitted, and that we will see this again in, in our February meeting, so we can deal with it. All right, um, does anyone have any further comments before I go first?
I think previously, we were told that they were going to start really cleaning up the property. It has started to get cleaned up, but it's still a ways to go. Like, is there a plan to have that? When, when's a proposed plan to have the property cleaned up?
Would you like to direct that directly towards?
Yeah.
Nebby or Hussein then?
Uh, yeah. Are we gonna have the, the rest of the, the lot cleaned up? Like, there's still stuff in the front, we'll call it the north side of the building.
On the north side, you're referring to close to County Road?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, that, I mean, what, what are you referring to exactly? Are you talking about the, like, kind of, the, the, the kind of little hut that is there in front of the building between the road and the building?
Seems there's, I think there's a sign that's over.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Filled it over, and there, some of the, there's holes where I think used to be some of the garage doors were in, going into the building. They just, just all, just not front that area. It still looks a pretty, I don't like to use the word dilapidated, but it is rough.
Yeah, well, we, we cleaned the parts already, and we're definitely planning to clean the rest in the upcoming weeks. If you want, I could write up a a formal proposal of our cleaning schedule for the property.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are there further questions? I, I just like to echo the sentiments expressed by Mr. Maudler.
Yeah.
Anyone else further? Any further? Okay, all right, so you do or don't?
No.
No, okay. Okay, Wendy, so can you read the recommendation then again, please, one, one more time?
Um, so not in the agenda package, because Nova Tech prepared the report for us, but I have a recommendation prepared. That staff, or that committee direct staff, to schedule a public meeting date for the zoning amendment application filed for the land set three-two-oh-nine, County Road Two, once the application is deemed complete by staff.
Is there somebody prepared to move that recommendation by Councilor Hunter, is there somebody, Chris Ward, second? If there's no more discussion, then I'll call the question. All in favor? Any? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, number six, Wendy, a little, tell me a bit of background on that. Aggregates master plan, please.
Yes, uh, to the chair. So the committee has had some discussions today about the aggregate master plan being prepared by the counties, assisted by the technical steering committee, and led by Meridian Planning. At a previous committee meeting, the committee had expressed some concerns with aggregate resources being shown on mapping. That had an overburden of more than five meters, expressing that it wasn't necessarily economically viable to extract the resources with such a great overburden. So we're able to confirm that the mapping that was available, in preparing the maps, only showed resources that had either zero to one meter, or one to eight meters, and eight to fifteen meters. With community's recommendation council passed a resolution that expressed those concerns, and I did have the opportunity to discuss those concerns with the steering committee at a, at a recent meeting. The, the committee and the experts on the call were able to share some information about some other some other quarries and extraction sites that were, that were in existence with an overburden of ten meters, or one had fourteen meters. The, and the researchers, the counties looked into it as well, and found that, yeah, maybe the mapping does need to be relooked at, if we're not sure, but maybe it isn't, maybe eight meters isn't feasible, but some of the discussions around the steering committee did come up. But say, well, our planning, and like our official plan and our planning tools are meant to provide for the long term, and we don't know that as those, as those resources become less available, they might become more valuable, so eight meters might still be viable. So all I, all I'm saying is there's a lot of discussion about it, and wanted to just provide the committee with an update. A draft copy of the plan has been prepared. It's like eighty pages, so I didn't include it in the agenda package, but there's a link to it there if you're interested in taking a look. The counties will be scheduling a statutory public meeting to present the final draft of the master plan. I believe that is going to be in December. When I wrote this report, the date hadn't been confirmed, but it may be confirmed by now. And I would imagine that it won't be until the new year that an amendment to the county's official plan would be adopted, and we, we would anticipate at the township to have an amendment to our official plan followed.
Good job, that's very good, very good background. Um, Chris, comments?
I mean, I, I think, you know, it's just the doc, the document itself now, but I know our concern was because of how much the township itself basically became aggravated. It was to the point where, you know, where could we ever build it here, right? So, I mean, I have concerns obviously about that. You know, hopefully we can think about it, but it doesn't sound like, well, we'll see what happens, but.
Councilor Steve?
I'm fine, thank you.
We'll see what happens.
Everybody else?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
I don't.
So, so first of all, point of information, the county planning advisory committee at which this will be discussed is the is the fourteenth, December the fourteenth. And those meetings are generally nine in the morning, and there'll be two statutory meetings, one right after the other, because generally nobody shows up at them. And then those two statutory meetings will be followed by one, by a regular meeting of the planning advisory committee. So they're generally pretty per functionary as well, and things just go bing, 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 without much question. So that's why I keep raising the issue with our council about in, we've got to get our word in here, and I appreciate the work that they, that, that the county development coordinator has done in meeting with the committee, the steering committee, and relating our concerns to the steering committee, so, if, through the chair, if I may. So it appears from the discussion that the committee is prepared to accept as, as, as a resource any kind of rock which is covered by up to, possibly covered by up to fourteen meters of overburden, especially if it's shale rock, because they know that they have examples of, of quarries where, that are operated, shale quarries that are operated in areas with up to fourteen meters of overburden. That's what the report says.
Uh, to the chair, we have, the, the resources that we use to develop the maps that are gonna be in the master plan have resources, there's a map that would show zero to one meters, one to eight meters, and eight to fourteen meters. The eight to fourteen meters is not what is included in the aggregate resources master plan.
Okay, so in the aggregate resources master plan so far, we're gonna deal with one to eight.
Zero to one and one to eight, yes.
Zero to one and one to eight, of overburden, right?
Yes.
All right, so that brings that brings forward as a protected resource, any rock that's within eight meters of the surface. Right? That's my issue, because that means that any area in the township, now are we going, are we going exclusively by those maps that the province is providing? Because those maps, to a large extent, are the result of, they're the result of radar photography, they're not result of people walking the ground. So what is the committee proposing to use as their, as their what, what, is that the map that they're using?
Um, yeah, there's a report, um, that's, that was, I, I don't remember how old it was, I, I wanna see two thousand and two. That, there's nothing was prepared, and there's a county's report, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know the name of the the report that was used with all this information. I can bring it back to the, to the committee or council at a future meeting. It, it's a very large report.
So, yeah, so, and I don't mean to put this, the community development coordinator on the spot, because I think it's us that are on the spot, Mr. Chairman. And, so here's the issue, I mean, and the, the number of my question is this. We know that, that any rock is, that is within eight meters of the surface could potentially be a protected area. All right, when you think of all the possible areas in our township that have rock within eight meters of the surface, that's a lot of real estate. Is it all going to be included as a protected resource, or half of it, or a third of it? That's the issue, because if it's all protected, then no matter where somebody chooses to develop a piece of property, if there happens to be rock within eight meters of the surface, they're gonna have to go through some sort of a process to show why they should be allowed to build whatever on that piece of property, even though the rock might be eight feet down. And that, that, that provides a big hurdle for somebody that wants to build a home, or somebody that wants to build a barn, a million-dollar barn, or a two-million-dollar chicken barn. You know, that, that's a big hurdle. And so that's the issue that I'm raising here. And if we knew, if I knew, for example, that the county was gonna take the position, well, the maps that we have show, just for an example, the maps that we have show gross acreages of, let's say, a hundred thousand acres where rock is within eight meters of the surface, but we're not gonna protect that whole hundred thousand acres. We're only gonna protect this twenty-five thousand in this area. I could live with that. But when it's the whole area that comes up on those maps, and those maps have never been truth, field-tested, they've never been field-tested, I just think it, it's a hindrance to development, even though it may be protection of a resource. So that's my issue. I'm getting, excuse me.
No, you're right with both of them, I'm a hundred percent agree with that. Would've said that exactly the same. I think that we can still, oh, sorry, Wendy, yeah.
It's okay, if, if I can share some more of my limited knowledge on aggregate resources. The, I, I study for, like, to determine the feasibility of the aggregate resources, isn't gonna be required if you're planning to develop a use that's already permitted on a lot. It comes into play when you want to create a new lot, so there's extra development there. Or you want a zoning bylaw amendment, so you want a use that wouldn't have been permitted before to now be permitted. So it's not, we don't ask for a study at the site plan control stage when there is a zoning bylaw amendment needed. We would ask for it at the severance stage, not a severance, that's just a technical lot line adjustment, but when you're creating a lot, we wouldn't request it for a minor variance, and this is all included in the, the draft study. Also, the, the resources in the mapping would be not shown within a certain distance around the settlement area. And it's also been proposed to not have to, to exclude the, the, that resources around the rural clusters. Now, how we're gonna define rural clusters of development, we're not sure yet, but we would. But we would also take it away from there where there's already a lot of like homes in close proximity where you wouldn't be able to. Start an aggregate like extract those resources anyway. So and then provincially significant wetlands and water bodies. It it wouldn't be shown around there as well. Those would be exempt.
Well, well, again, that's just common sense, because you don't have a significant wetland if 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 you have. Bedrock within eight meters of the surface, but, Mr. Chairman, just to go back to the very last issue that we were discussing. Which is scheduling a public meeting for zoning change at Terrapin Farms. I can guarantee you that underneath. Terrapin Farms building right now, the bedrock will be within eight meters of the surface. That's almost solid rock through that entire area. And so if the aggregate resources study was in effect at the present time. It wouldn't be just a simple question of scheduling a public meeting for a new use on that piece of property. Because that's why we're rezoning it, right? To permit a different use. It would be a question of do they have to provide a servicing plan? Now they'll have to provide a plan to tell us why that property should be rezoned. For the purpose of a cannabis production facility when there's an aggregate resource within three meters of the surface. They'll have to provide an additional plan for us.
Through the chair to respond, I I I'm not sure that it would be required there. The lot is already developed. I I like I know this is just a.
To different use.
Yes. I guess I'm not, I'm not sure it would be required.
That's my worry.
And just one small thing, if you don't mind. Just the irony of that is that when you look at this, not that I think is the map we're talking about. It's not actually shown that it has any issues out, so.
Well, it's a. It's a souther- southerly Ontario. Southwesternly Ontario driven study. They're not taking into consideration most of the logistics of aggregate resource in eastern Ontario. This is totally, as I'm concerned, driven by western Ontario being short because development is spread out so far. And and as far as our industrial area and one thing, you know, I'm not worried anything about this. Infecting on it, because wherever a quarry has to go. They're not, they're not changing the pressures that are put on us to establish a quarry with setbacks, one thing or another, so. Industrial park and stuff, there never could be a quarry established there because no, you couldn't meet meet setbacks and stuff. Re- required because of the train line across there, high tension lines across there, buildings there. We got to have five hundred meters. To even be considered to establish, so. That's a my problem, problem is the only thing I can see and the thing that's definitely taken out of the zoning. But it's never going to be considered as provincially significant wetlands. And rivers. Agriculture resource land and and stuff as far as I can read, and it isn't protected. And there it might be zone, we might have an area. Our biggest area is Shan- Shanley, then your Pittston area. Well, there's areas in there that's all close to the rock. Not close, as far as I'm concerned as a farmer, because there's three or four meters of good overburden land over it. Tile drained and working good, but. Lot less than eight meters. You're you go down down there, you're talking thirty feet down down there. I don't know how many places in this township you could find it. You could dig thirty feet and not hit rock. Very few of them. That's my problem, the whole thing that I thought five meters was more than adequate. They can come up with all the figures they want, want. I've been in aggregate for forty forty years. You're not going to find any developer go win in eastern Ontario if there's eight meters of over. Burden to go there. You're on most places, we're only only allowed to go down down maybe fifteen meters and then you got to go through all kinds of water studies and stuff. You're not going to try somebody's well or blow blow any deeper and stuff and it just gets. And the the fireage in Brockwood wouldn't even be operating today, only that they're operating under old. Old license agreement. They would have been shut down years ago because they're so deep. But they were established and they're running. You're never going to see a quarry in eastern Ontario that depth again. Around, so but it's just. Mayor said it's restrictive on areas that it's just going to put a put a burden on. I was moving, we're going to be dealing with rural subdivisions in. This council, a future council is going to be looking at rural subdivisions and subdivision developers are are looking. Looking to put some place nice tree area that they can clear off, have. State blocks and stuff in there. They're not going to find any of this, but they're not going to have to go through us to. Getting cleared for aggregate resource because everyone where they'd want to do that's going to be dry, not thing, they're going to be blocked in this aggregate.
CAO wants to jump in as well.
Yeah, but if my name is shared, so like in that particular circumstance. If if they're looking at taking over agricultural land to 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 put in the plan of subdivision. Uh, which is not a permitted use, they're probably going to need to do feasibility study and demonstrate. Uh, and and I would expect that that. Council would want some type of feasibility study that indicates that a plan of subdivision is better use than 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 an aggregate resource. And very probably a very minor cost than the overall cost of what it would be to take a plan of subdivision. I I guess I'm I'm not really following that. If if it's agricultural use now. It means that a permitted use, the 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 feasibility study is not going to come into play. It's only it it it's only under certain conditions.
I'm talking rural rural areas. Not just agriculture zone there, rural areas that's being used.
Right.
Selling as agricultural, it's not protected under agriculture.
No, but it's but it's a permitted use.
We had a couple, just a. Ten years years ago. Say a lot of construction like. Totem Ranch Road.
Totem Ranch Road, yeah.
Developed. There was a flag at the time which he dropped, dropped. But that's close to rock back there. If he ever brings that forward again and wants to get it. That's going to, that's a protected area under agricultural resource. Just a rural area, it's not farm, it's tree. But he'll have a have to to find them. That's more important to put subdivision on it than it would be to. For aggregate resource.
I agree.
And how they. That gets defined when they do studies because. We can see the pressure being put on from the west. They want to protect it all down here, so they have all this rock. They might say, yeah, there's. Two big quarries right close to it right now, but. They're going to run out in twenty five years, so we want that. We don't want subdivision built built in the, we want that still state.
This is our opportunity there, correct, to. To 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 feed our comments to to the United Counties that that we think this is. I think this committee, at least one here, thinks that.
Overreach.
That it's it's too far, right? Yeah. So that is, this is, this is our opportunity to provide this, those comments and that feedback to that committee, correct?
That's true, that that is correct, but I I would. I I am reasonably comfortable that the technical steering committee is well aware that we're not very happy with what's being proposed. But. I I I like, yes, you know, unfortunately for. It's the D and. We're one voice, right?
But you know, Councilman Lunders' reference to the to the proposal that we went through just shortly after I came on council with the Totem Ranch subdivision. That was a pretty major subdivision if it would have gone through, it was something like twenty five or thirty lots residential. And you know, the 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 nice thing about that location was, I mean, it. At all proximity to the four lane for four oh four sixteen, et cetera, et cetera. What kind of study that he would have had to do, but this had been in effect. What kind of study that he would have had to do to show that those, let's call them twenty five residential lots. Were a higher and better use than saving that land for a potential. Aggregate resource quarry. I don't know, how how would he justify that? I mean, what kind of an argument would it take? To show that 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 the that the subdivision was a higher and better use? Did the committee discuss that? I mean, how does he get over that bar?
Um, through the chair, I think the study is. Uh, I think it's called the land use compatibility study and there's I think there's different kinds of land use compatibility studies and. It's usually done by a by a planner or I think sometimes by an engineer and I I haven't. I haven't asked for and received one myself, so I couldn't tell you what that looks like, but our official plan says if we need to determine. That the resource, that aggregate resource is not feasible, so I guess in our case, if it if that. Study said that this resource had six meters of overburden, the council might agree like this, this is not feasible. Um, and it would or it would have to say that both land uses or development serves a greater long-term public interest. And issues of public health, public safety and environmental impact can be addressed.
I don't know where we go, Mr. Chairman. I know that I I I take some, I take some comfort from the CAO's comment. But I worry what shows up on the paper and boy, this is a very interesting, this is a very interesting read.
I can well see where they're they're coming from, being in the in the business. But no aggregate. Developer is going to object to this. Because it's given more standing than the studies that I had to go through personally to open a quarry. Yeah, this study would would have been in place right then. Would have been about. Kind of cost for me to your half.
Yes, right.
It's already.
It's already recognized.
Two meters, two meters of overburden over. And ours has already been studied and we say you haven't been ground studied done. Well, there was ground study done in six or five. They actually came in. In Edgbird and I have one of them, I don't who all else, a lot of them are gone now. But Ministry come in with a drill grade. And and drill grade across cornfields and everything else and just dropped the hole and drilled and got depth, never asked permission, never asked nothing. They just said. We we're doing the study, we have provincial government of system, they cut a brand new, two brand new page wire fence. And our firm firm went pretty good and and built four holes to see where the rock was and they did it in other farms like.
What should they did?
They're human cry around around Edgbird over them. They just, no, we got a foreignated win and that. After a month of it, with the council that was in place at the time, they raised hell over it and and all of a sudden the builder disappeared. Probably backed off and that, but they did a lot of damage around here for a while. They were a pretty arrogant bunch that was running.
So was that Ellen R that did that?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Ministry of. So did your committee have those, excuse me?
Yeah.
Did your committee have those, Chair?
Through the through the chair, the study that I very badly referenced, because I don't know a lot of it, I have to skim through, I have a copy of it and I can see reference to like some some drilling that had been done. I know it wasn't all done by like a a radar, so I know some of us checked them. To what extent I I can.
So just. Are you, can I? Yeah, so just trying to wrap it up. Uh, to the CAO. So that I think the committee has has been very clear that we have. Large concerns on on possible future development while. While we respect the the long-term planning need for for an aggregate aggregate resource master plan. We also have been pretty clear. In in saying, I think the committee has been pretty clear in saying that they have severe or or. Large concerns about how that may stymie development in Edwardsburg Cardinal. I just want certainty that. That while they've heard that in the past, that they will continue to hear that until that plan is is passed. And if if not, how do we, what's our mechanism to make sure that it gets included?
As a suggested mechanism, sure, Mr. Chairman. Could we have our community development coordinator draft a resident, a a letter? To that effect reflecting, assuming that we have consensus of of the concerns. Uh, a draft a letter that the CAO could send to the to the county planner? I mean, I'm just thinking that the the CAO is busy. He but I would like to see the letter go to the county planner over his signature and maybe over both signatures, so I think it's clear.
There to to the development coordinator, to any that, you know, what the concerns are with the committee and how we feel about that. If committee was to give you. The recommendation or the direction that the mayor just said, are you comfortable with what the discussion has been to be able to draft that letter?
Through the chair, I believe, so it's. Please, concerns remain about the amount of overburden and about, I guess, the number of circumstances that would require further studies.
But but let's accept the overburden amount. Because the the community development coordinator is, it's anything from zero to eight meters is going to be identified, right?
One day.
Yeah, zero or yeah, okay.
Zero.
Because they've already done zero.
Yeah.
From zero to eight, from zero to eight meters of overburden is going to be. Uh, acceptable to identify a resource underneath that, right? So let's accept that and not argue that point and say what we're concerned about is. Are you going to take everything that's on those maps or fifty percent?
All right, through the chair, so they they're not taking everything on the map. They they have excluded the the areas that I mentioned before. And sorry, I don't have the list in front of me to know all of the areas that are excluded, like the there's a a distance around. Lakes and around settlement areas and rural residential clusters, so they're they're going to remove that from those areas.
So we'd like the exclusion areas to be as large as possible.
Yeah.
About that. Did you want to comment something else? Sorry, I thought I heard you.
But no, well.
If you didn't, then.
Through 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 the chair, there there's the option of the latter or there. If if they're not meeting until mid-December, there there is the option of council resolution.
Well, I'm fine with the council resolution.
Yeah, so I. If you want, we can, we can, we can, uh, do our best to draft what we believe are the. Are the are the concerns.
Without a problem, so can we have a nod, a general nodding of heads for agreement on that?
Yeah, I think it's probably worth also mentioning possibly, but all of the planned rural clusters we would have put in place as well, right? Because it's not just the existing one, but there's plans to do more.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that's important to note there, too.
Both areas.
Uh, through the chair, so those those planned areas. Base of growth according to our official plan are.
So it's just how big those areas are.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Uh, clear and good and and good, yes.
We will, we will find out.
I will, I will, everybody will have their pen out scratching. Um, great discussion, thank you. Uh, I think that wraps it, right? So we're on to B, there is nothing through, I'm not missing anything, right, Wendy? We're on to five B, which is work, we don't, and C, we don't. Uh, so we're on to item six, which is inquiries and notices of motion. Does anybody have any questions? No, good, no question here. There's nobody here.
Oh, I did have something coming forward.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, so two things, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So just a reminder to all the members of the committee that the United Counties Economic Development Summit. Uh, will take place on Friday, November the nineteenth. I think that's two Fridays from now. It'll be a virtual conference via Zoom. Uh, I would urge and and recommend that members of the committee might want to participate in that summit.
That's great, correct.
Uh, I don't know, but I think this is already. Yeah, but it it does provide a a great overview of what's happening within the United Counties. So that's the first thing. And the second thing I just wanted to announce is that. The principles of African bronze honey have closed the purchase of the Mad Max furniture building in Cardinal. Uh, and that was reported today in the. Uh, and that was reported today in the uh South Rainbow Beacon and reported to me on Tuesday by the principal of uh African Bronze Honey. They're quite excited to have um closed the deal and own that building. They have some great plans for it and uh he's going to have a statement for me to read at the council meeting on uh Monday night, but because it was already in the beacon today, I want all members of this committee to be aware of. I think that would be a great, I think that'll be a great uh freshener for uh the main street of Cardinal. Now, if we could just get something done with the old grocery store, would that be nice? Wouldn't that be nice?
We could go behind there, man. Don't, just wait till we're done the meeting, please. Okay, so um are there any further inquiries in Westport? No, uh, seven question period, we don't have anyone online, there's no closed session. Before I call um for adjournment, I just have a couple of comments myself, so um uh, first off is we don't meet again until um February the seventh, so um everyone can uh log that into their uh books for February, February thirty seventh of twenty twenty two will be the next meeting of uh this committee. Um, uh, personally, I want to say thank you to uh each and every member uh of the committee for all the hard work that we put in here in twenty twenty one. Uh, together, we continue to build a community where our residents are proud to live, we're able to work and we want to play. Um, I appreciate each and every single member's unique contribution uh to that goal, uh so thank you for that. Um, there's certainly no signs of slowing down in twenty twenty two, so uh enjoy the Christmas break, enjoy the the break that's coming forward. We'll get back to work like we said in February of uh of twenty twenty two. Uh, any, just so that all committee members are are aware, if if you you're worried about missing something, uh, planning applications or any urgent matters that are brought forward will be reviewed at a committee of the whole meeting uh either on December sixth or uh at the council meeting on December thirteenth. So um something that can't wait until February seventh, we'll we'll get dealt with a little bit sooner. So um with that, thank you to everyone and um I need a mover and a second, a mover, a second. And all in favor, of course. Um, and I I didn't say, I said to everyone else except for staff, uh, thank